I'm going to do this for, to do this for a while. I now call to order the Indianapolis Public Library Board of Trustees meeting. Ms., sorry, Ms. Gilbert, please call the roll.
Mr. Biederman.
Present.
Dr. Matata.
Present.
Dr. Payne.
Present.
Dr. Riola.
Present.
Ms. Tribble.
Present.
And Dr. White.
Present.
We do have a quorum.
The Chair recognizes a quorum. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 22nd meeting of the Indianapolis NDPL Board of Trustees. Thank you so much for joining us. Again, I'm Hope Tribble, President of the Library Board. And want to start today with a word of thanks to our host branch, Glendale, which reopened in this beautiful location in March of this year. So it's been 113 days and we are grateful for the way that the Glendale branch has reinvigorated the neighborhood and is serving as a popular welcoming destination. So thank you to Jen Maddix and her entire team for your role in reopening this branch. And we will hear from you shortly. Tonight, I want to take a moment to welcome our new NDPL Board member, Dr. Lisa Riolo. She's a licensed physical therapist. She has a PhD in cognitive science with an expertise in public health and public health policy. She is a retired endowed Chair of the Physical Therapy Department of IUPUI. And she may be familiar to some of you because she has also donated her time as an NDPL volunteer for more than 15 years at Central Library where she's logged more than 1,000 volunteer hours. So welcome, Dr. Riolo. Glad to have you. A few more thank yous. The Indianapolis Public Library is deep into a strategic planning process. The results will be our goals and aspirations for NDPL for the next three years. And I want to thank the Board and staff and community for your time, for your creative energy and work on building the strategic plan. The Indiana State Manual for Public Library Boards, which is called in the Public Trust, identifies five tasks for us as a library, Public Library Board. We set policies, we hire the Director, we plan for the future of the library, we monitor and evaluate the overall effectiveness of the library, and we advocate for the library and the community and as community members on the Board. I'm sharing this for context because I know all my fellow members know this. But I just want to acknowledge here that this is a major part of our portfolio as a Board. And there are three other things I want to highlight from in the Public Trust about planning. Planning is not a frill, but one of the most important trusts that the community gives to the Library Board. In an age when dramatic change in libraries come almost faster than we can comprehend, it might seem like an exercise in futility. But the very fact that change is so rapid is even more reason that every Board should have a plan. Secondly, Board members must be visionaries for the library. And third, all planning for the library is a team effort among the Board, Director, and Staff. So I've appreciated, and I know we all have appreciated, the thoughtfulness and the engagement and the powerful ideas that are being shared. I want to thank our Board Member, Dr. Louis Palacio, for leading the process and for all of our Board Members who are serving. And I also want to thank Mackenzie, Mary Ann Mackenzie, we call her Mackenzie, for her facilitation of the Community and Staff Committee work and the patron input, her research and thoroughness in keeping this train moving, scheduling meetings. They're all huge tasks. And I know that your work and the work of everyone will lead to a quality strategic plan just shortly. So I also want to thank Area Resource Manager Peggy Ware for her help in note-taking at our meetings. And finally, to our Board Members, I've appreciated your time and collaboration. This, these conversations have really had a way of highlighting the diversity of our Board, and I'm looking forward to more conversations. So with that said, I will thank you for your kind attention to my opening remarks. And I'll ask Ms. Jen Maddix to please step forward with the branch report. Good evening.
Hello, President Tribble and Members of the Library Board. Thank you for being here today at the Glendale Branch. I'm just going to talk a little bit about what we have going on here in our lovely new space. Who we are, we're a full-time manager, a full-time circ supervisor, a large reference and circulation team. We also have seven pages and are also lucky to have 20 really wonderful volunteers as well as seven visiting staff from the Nora and Pike locations, which have been a really great help while we've been here. The first picture on the top is a picture of the team that was here for the grand opening day, all outside in our matching purple shirts. The picture on the bottom left is one of the last pictures of the team leaving the old Glendale branch in that elevator. And then the picture on the bottom right is a picture of the team inside. We were doing some team-building activities before we opened to the public. Who we serve. Most of our patrons are families and a lot of folks that have lived here in this community for a long time. And the majority of our patrons also have some college or a bachelor's degree. How we serve is mostly through a lot of programming and outreach. The first picture there on the top is a picture of a seed library packing event that we had here last year. The Glendale location was the first branch to have seed libraries at their location. And we still have a lot of really engaged patrons in the community that love the seed library. And our seed library is always very popular. We also offer storytimes for babies and toddlers once a week. We have pasta read therapy dogs that visit us twice a month. A teen dungeon is in dragons program, a yarn slingers adult crafting group that meets here, as well as an adult book club. And then the picture on the bottom is just a young patron that was here perusing the shelves on her opening day. So while we've been here in this new building, it has been very busy. Our new space is easier to access and better meets the needs of our population, I feel. And the feedback that we've gotten from the community has been wonderful. And the statistics, I think, really back that up. And then around the branch, we have materials in French, Spanish, Korean, and Braille. We're gold LEED certified, and so you can't really see it when you're standing outside. But our entire roof is covered in solar panels and they generate enough energy to cover 71% of our building's energy costs. And then the picture on the left is a young patron here getting her library card on her opening day. The picture in the middle is of Harrison's Orbit. If you go into our children's area, you'll see this space. Harrison Strader Wood was a young patron who lives here in the community and he loved the library and he loved storytimes and he loved being read to. Unfortunately, he passed away at 17 months old. And so his friends and family came together and worked with the foundation to raise money. And with that, they were able to create this really wonderful space here. Money from that was also used to refresh our entire bunny bookbag collection throughout the entire system. And then the picture on the left, it's a little hard to see, but you'll see five stained glass panels. Those stained glass panels, as well as some other stained glass in our Fox Study Room, were brought over from their old Glendale location. So in this community, there used to be a Fox stained glass studio that was owned by Vincent Fox. He loved the Glendale branch and he used to do a lot of free programs for us. When he passed away, his daughters donated these panels to the library and we had them at the old Glendale location. And it's really nice that we were able to bring them with us here. It's a little hard to see, but if you look closely at those panels, each one of those panels has a picture of every single Broad Ripple or Glendale location. And does anyone have any questions?
Thank you for your report.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Excuse me. Now we'll move forward with public comment. Ms. Gilbert, please.
I have not received any list of, I'm sorry. There were no signups. Thank you, John.
Okay, great. So we'll move on to approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on June 24th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second? The minutes have been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Biederman.
Approved.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. Riola.
I abstain. I wasn't a member. Thank you.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Ms. Tribble.
Approved. The motion carries. Move on to committee reports and we'll start with the Finance Committee chaired by Dr. Payne.
Okay. Lolita Campbell, our CFO, will come up and Mary Rankin, our Treasurer.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I also want to invite Mr. Scott Nickerson. He is a partner with Crowe and they perform our gap audits. And he wants to review our comprehensive audit report.
Great. So are we going to start with that?
Yes.
Great. And everybody, Lolita, pass this out. Welcome.
All right. Good evening, everyone. First, I want to mention I am a patron of the Glendale branch, having, living about five minutes from here. So we really appreciate the investment that the library has made in this community. As you mentioned, it has had a big impact. As I see the parking lot full every day as I drive by, which is always a good sign. So happy to be here tonight. My goal here is to give you a high-level overview of the audit we conducted for calendar year 2023. We did have the opportunity to speak with President and CEO in more detail about the overall results of the audit, so I'm going to do a high-level view for you today. We're going to talk about the scope of work and our audit opinion, just a quick overview of the financial statements and then other communications to the Board, and then if you have any questions. All right. The scope of work. So our role is to audit the results of your activities for the year ended 12/31/23. That includes the library as well as information related to the foundation, which is a separate component unit and is audited by another entity, but it's incorporated into your overall audit report. One of the things I think is really exciting for the library each year is you participate in the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, which is a voluntary program, which you've done for numerous years. You can't even count them at this point. But that is the highest form of reporting that is available to a government entity. So just wanted to acknowledge that the investment that the finance team makes in providing that information. One of our other goals to provide you recommendations if there are any matters to report, and we'll cover those in another slide. But the most important thing is our audit opinion, which basically says that we believe the financial statements as prepared by management to be materially correct and meet the appropriate reporting standards. That's the highest form of opinion. We call it a clean opinion or an unqualified opinion in other terms, but it's the highest form of opinion the library can receive. And what that means is we believe that the financials are materially accurate and the disclosures follow the appropriate standards, which is as expected but never taken for granted. It's really the result of the day-to-day activities of the finance team to be able to report to you and provide you information timely throughout the year. Go to the next page, please. This is going to test your eyesight. I promise I will not quiz you on this. But I think one of the things that you guys focus on during the year is the general fund, which is most of your budget activity. So we're going to give you a quick overview of your funds and how they operate at a high level. What you see on the screen is the balance sheet, which shows four different types of funds. The general fund you can see is the most predominant activity on the balance sheet. It does represent most of your activities because the other columns are really more specific activities that are outside of your normal operating activities. So the general fund is where most of your activities occur. You do have cash balances of approximately 45.7 million and investments of 3.2 million. Your overall fund balance is 47 million. So if you put that in terms of operations, that 47 million represents about 11 months of operating expenses. So your operating expenses are around $50 million in that general fund. And that represents almost a full year of activity. Now, there's no standard for that, but typically we'd expect there to be at least three months to six months or more of support. And that does align with your annual process and relying on tax revenues to support the organization, which we'll see. The bond and interest fund is typically used to pay for your bond activity throughout the year. And that has tax support to pay your debt service each year. So you collect taxes specific to meet those debt service requirements. The construction funds, you'll see there is $32 million in cash. That represents the proceeds of bonds that are being used to construct buildings like this that at the time at 12/31, those are the funds that were available for construction activities for this location, as well as other active building projects that are funded by bonds. So we keep that information separate to understand what that money is used for. And then the fourth quarter, or fourth category is a catch-all. But the significant aspects of that are the LRF Fund and the Gift Fund, which represent majority of your other activities. So overall, fund balances for the entire organization were 86 million, of which the primary aspects are general fund of 47 million and the 30.9 million of construction funds that will be expended. So those monies will go back down to a zero balance as you finish your construction. On the next page is the income statement for that same information. One of the things I wanted to point out is that overall, when you look at your revenue streams, your property taxes represent about 82% of your revenue that is available to you. Under intergovernmental are other tax revenues that are available. So a total of 94% of your revenues for the general fund are funded through taxes, which is normal for other libraries. We also work with, for example, Allen County Library would have a very similar income statement to what you would have as far as proportion of revenues supporting the organization. Your overall expenses in the general fund were about 50.9 million. And then overall change in fund balance was a positive 1.6 million for the year for the general fund. If you look at the other categories, as I mentioned before, property taxes are supporting the bond and interest fund. So that typically will break even or have a small balance based on the next payment schedule. The construction fund, you would expect to see the capital outlay, which you can see there's overall 16.2 million of expenses. And you'll also see that there are new bonds that were issued during the year that were approximately $18 million of, at the fund level, which is called revenue, available to fund that, those construction funds. So you time your bonds to follow the construction patterns of the plans you've had for capital projects going forward. And then lastly, the non-major is primarily donations through the gift fund and then any money that you might use to fund the LRF Fund. So that high level there. So that's at the fund level. But one of the things we also report on in the financial statements is what we call the GAAP presentation or full accrual. So the fund level does not take into account long-term assets and long-term liabilities. So I'm just going to highlight a couple of things that are different. Not going to go through this whole document with you. The first thing I wanted to highlight is capital assets. So capital assets are not recorded on the information I just showed you. But you'll see on the bottom left there that you have about $185 billion of capital assets. And that's called a net book value. So that's the total cost of all your assets over time, less any depreciation. So that will increase as you spend money on your new buildings, for example. But then you also depreciate those over a period of time. A building might last 40 to 50 years, so it would depreciate down. But the current position is about $185 million. So that's the significant change that you'll see on a full accrual or GAAP basis is that, those capital assets. On the right side, you'll see two lines. The general obligation bonds is 16.5 million and general obligation bonds of 48.3. Those are just broken down between current and non-current. But they total approximately $55 million. As I mentioned on the prior page, you had had about $18 million in new proceeds, but your total debt bond activity is 55 million. And the way that works is you have the taxes that come into that bond and interest fund that are set through your process with the city to receive funds to match the debt service requirements for those bonds. But it's also tied to your capital plan going forward. So there's a mechanism in place to capture the money to pay that debt service every year. So then the last thing I wanted to point out that's different than at the fund level is a net pension liability, which is the middle on the right side, which is about 11.1 million. So what that means is that this organization participates in the statewide PERF plan and that represents your proportionate liability to the overall plan. And that's based on the number of employees you have that are participating in that plan. The library is responsible for funding 11.2% each year to that plan. And then you also contribute, pay for the, they also contribute to 3% on behalf of employees. So about 14% of eligible payroll is paid into that fund. That fund is managed where it still has a liability. It's not at 100% funding. It's at about 79, 80%, depending on which day you look or which year. So that represents your obligation. I kind of view that as a mortgage. It's kind of like a long-term process where it's going to balance out over time due to actual assumptions. So there's really nothing you can control related to that liability other than how many employees you're managing and your fiscal responsibility is 14% essentially of your eligible payroll. So those are the significant differences that you'd see between what you'll see every, every month with the fund accounting versus what you'll see on the full accrual. And bondholders, outside stakeholders will use this information to gauge your credit worthiness. They'll look at and say, what are the activities you're funding? What are your obligations? What are the assets you have to manage? But overall, the organization, as I mentioned, does have an 11-month reserve. Typically, that's driven based on the timing of taxes coming in. Since I mentioned taxes are about 90% of your revenues, they're going to have a time lag there, so constant funding there. Lastly, our responsibility as auditors to communicate if there are any issues essentially related to the audit. We did have one waived adjustment. A waived adjustment means that it's something that we identified that we thought was not material enough to require an adjustment. It just related to timing of accounts payable, essentially. So management decided not to post it and we agreed with that assertion. Lastly, I'm sorry. Secondly, we look at the whole annual comprehensive financial report to make sure it's consistent with what we audited. We did not identify any issues related to what you've submitted as the information surrounding your financials. We do get representations from management, basically asking them questions about, is there any information you've not shared with us? Anything that readers might need to know or other matters that we should consider in the audit? And management does sign that, representing that they provided the information we've asked for and made us aware of any other matters. We also ask the CEO and the Board President the same question, right? And then we're required to report if there are any matters such as significant difficulties or contentious matters or other matters. We're happy to report there are no such items to report to the Board. So that's hopefully a high-level summary, give you an idea of what we focus on in the audit and how we view the operations of the library. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Nickerson, and thanks for your report. I thought, you know, we are wanting to be more transparent about and continue learning about the finances of Board. And so we do appreciate your coming to make that presentation. Are there any questions for Mr. Nickerson? Hearing none, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you.
Juliet.
Okay. Mary and I will present the Treasury Report for the June of 2024. I will start with the revenue and Mary will review the expenditures. So for the operating revenue, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. We are 6% over our budget, which is great. We had 56% because I know the first five months, we didn't show a great percentage of our revenue. Again, we get our taxes in June and November, December. So we are 6% over our revenue, what we're projecting in our budget. Our intergovernmental revenue has increased as well. We received We received, um, one point four million in our license excess, um, excise tax revenue. And, um, I will kind of review that on our cash flow. But you can also find that on page twenty-two of our detailed income statement and also page twenty-five of the cash flow statement to show, um, to reflect the, um, intergovernmental taxes that we received. And also, um, our charges for services. Printing has been consistent, um, this month, what, in June, we received twenty-eight thousand, uh, which is great. And then for, of course, our interest that we earned, uh, which is outstanding, um, our year-to-date amount is eight hundred and three thousand dollars. And for the month of June was a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, with, um, huge fund being at five point four percent and, and, um, Trust Indiana being at five point three-three percent. Any questions on the revenue? Um, this slide right here, just, I just wanna reflect, uh, I know I said this on page twenty, um, twenty-five of your, um, your board document. However, I wanted to reflect it up here to show where we received, um, all of our taxes and taxes in the month of June. Did anyone have any questions on this cash flow statement? Okay. On the next slide, um, you'll see a, a slope graph. And this reflects the month of, um, June, uh, twenty twenty-four versus Ju- June of twenty twenty-three. And you see we slightly increased in June for our property taxes. And that is, um, due to the slight increase, um, property advancement that we received. And then the next graph is the year-to-date, um, reflection of our revenues. Any questions in regards to the graphs? Okay. I'll pass it on to Mary. She's gonna review the expenditures.
Thank you, Alita. The expenditures of the operating fund, um, show, of course, the largest is personal services and benefits. And it's running below the budget, uh, on a monthly and year-to-date basis. Overall, it's forty-three percent of the budget spent, uh, both in that category and overall. Uh, supplies are within budget and other services and charges. Um, we, the largest part of that was to pay for the computer services, um, that the library branches use, which is called Polaris. And we also, um, had the cleaning services and security charges being paid. The capital outlay is consistent with, uh, last year. And overall, we're at forty-three percent, which is favorable, uh, to our budget expectation. And then we have the graphs showing the month-to-date comparing to where we were a year ago. And our budget did increase for, um, personal services and benefits. But we're, um, really right, uh, about the same on the costs, even though we did have a raise this year, so. And then the supplies are smaller budget, of course, and other services and charges, um, are running an increased amount, but still below budget. And then, uh, the year-to-date comparison between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four is to the right in that line chart. And it, um, also shows the budget as actual year-to-date. And the year-to-date, okay, the budget. So it reflects the same information that we're below budget, um, but ahead of where we were last year because our budget did increase. And then we have a five-year comparison as well, uh, of revenue and expenditures. It shows twenty twenty-four higher in revenue and slightly higher in expenditures. So then the largest part of that is because of the timing of our property taxes coming in. And then on the right is by major type of expenditures where we break out salaries versus benefits. Have a little bit more detail there in that line chart. So, any questions on expenditures?
I have a general question. Just kind of been, um, going forward from the audit and we have a pretty healthy, uh, fund balance, um, eleven months. So we have, we've almost, well, we have, yeah, almost a hundred percent of our annual operating. What are you thinking about that in terms of going forward? Will we, is the goal to maintain that level? Or is, do you have, have you done any projections or planning with that?
Of course, we've done projections. Uh, we do have long-term planning. We have that with our consultant, Michael Groter. And he has suggested that if we have six months or more, it's great, makes, you know, a healthy cash balance. And we do have some initiatives that we're trying to explore right now to, um, to possibly initiate in the next, uh, twenty twenty-five budget. And however, we don't wanna expand that, um, healthy balance as well, but we wanna be, uh, good stewards of our funds and make the correct business decision for the library.
So you expect it'll go down some?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Based on planning, okay, great. Are there any other questions?
Can we go back to the revenue stage? We have over a million three hundred thousand for miscellaneous. What's in the miscellaneous?
In the revenue? Is it, that's the interest. Well, largest part of that's. Yeah, the largest part is the interest that we earned.
So we just label it miscellaneous?
Um, yes. Well, it's a, it's in a category. If you look on page twenty-five of your, uh, twenty-two of your detail report of your treasury report, you'll see the detail for the miscellaneous, it'll be this of your board report. On page twenty-two, you'll see the details of the miscellaneous. And that will include, um, any interest in facility, um, revenue and equipment rental revenue and other grants. And that's detailed on this bottom section right here, Dr. Matata.
That's pretty standard too. Usually, interest is not, I mean, everywhere we're seeing, I know even at the state, we're seeing that interest is just, um, outperforming even the, um, the revenue projections, um, taking into account how, how high interest rate. For the last couple of years, it's just been higher than normal.
Yeah.
So it, it normally is kind of miscellaneous, right?
Right. And, and we projected one point one million. However, we're gonna exceed that projection as you can see now. Um, however, um, it is projected that the interest will go lower by the end of, um, this calendar year, close to the election possibly. We'll just have to wait and see.
Any other questions?
I agree with Hope in regards to the almost full year of activity for the total fund balance. It would be great to hear what you're thinking about and how we might make those kinds of investments. Forty-seven million, almost a full year of money coming in and sitting there. How do we, how do you plan to use that? And what might we hear in terms of the highest and most profitable way of investing?
Our next meeting, our next board meeting, um, is gonna be a public hearing. We'll go over the twenty twenty-five budget and we'll have some, um, initiatives on there to re. However, we won't use that healthy cash balance. We won't use it all. We're gonna use it to support those initiatives.
So I just know that bondholders will look at the assets as well as that, so.
Any other questions? Okay. So, um, yeah, we're gonna, okay. So, um, we've heard the report of the treasurer. Um, is there a motion to accept the report of the treasurer for June twenty twenty-four for filing for audit?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Gilbert, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman.
Approved.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
And Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Ms. Treble.
Approved.
Thank you.
The motion carries. Back to you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is, uh, the review of the resolution forty dash twenty twenty-four. Um, this is approval of the liability insurance, um, for a policy period between twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. It renews August the first of this year and ends of August the first of next year. Oops, sorry. Um, you can, as you can see on this slide, that there's an increase of ten point eight percent on, on the renewal policy. And that is mainly because of our new building here that we're sitting in. The value has increased as well as, um, general, uh, the market, um, increases like, um, property losses and, um, increase in verdicts and settlements that we have had. But other than that, um, this is kind of standard. So, um, ten point eight percent is honestly pretty, pretty good cause we have a new building with a high value. Um, the increase, um, is a total of forty-three thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars if you wanna put that in content with a ten percent increase.
Okay, great. So, resolution forty, twenty twenty-four regarding the approval of library insurance for policy period twenty-four, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, received a positive recommendation from the finance committee. So the chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Gilbert, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman.
Approved.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
And Dr. Payne.
Approved.
And Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
And Dr. White.
Approved.
And Ms. Treble.
Approved.
Thank you.
The motion carries.
And next, um, since we're six months into our calendar year, I wanted to, uh, reflect on our XBE stats right now. The top half is the month-to-date, but the bottom half is the year-to-date, which I like to focus on right there. And you can see as for June, for the MBEs, and we, um, adopted the city for the percentages. For the MBE, um, the percentage is fifteen percent. And as of June, we had twenty point seven percent. And for the WBE, the, our goal was eight percent and we're at, um, three point three percent. And then for the VBE, um, our goal was three percent. We're at seven point seven percent. And the DOBE, um, our goal was one percent and, um, we're at zero percent. And there was a shift from the WBE to, I mean, the MBE to the, no, I'm correct. The WBE to the VBE, um, because of our house cleaning, um, services, the contract was shifted. So those, that percentage got moved to the VBE. Any questions?
Not a question, but for our larger public, sometimes we use terms that not everybody knows or understands. Can you just make sure that we always say, what do we mean by WEE? What do we mean by XB? What do those terms mean? I think that's always just helpful since we're always serving the public.
Okay, sorry. The, um, minority business and women business and veteran business and disability.
Just to comment, to compliment the, the efforts that have been made by our staff, by our individuals who have watched, make sure that we do handle this work of committing to equity of opportunity to be commended by the group that reviews it carefully and makes sure that it does occur.
Yes, I wanna commend my team member, Gwen Slims.
Absolutely.
She, um, Simmons. Um, she does an excellent job. Sorry for saying Sam, the Simmons. I don't know what I was thinking about. Uh, any additional questions about the XBEs?
No, thank you for the update.
Okay, thank you. Lastly, I promise, this is just the update. Um, as, um, Scott Nickerson said, that our audit is complete. And then our twenty twenty-five budget next, uh, month, August the thirteenth, we'll have a public hearing. We'll review that, um, the twenty twenty-five budget, uh, proposed budget. It's gonna be a draft. And then, um, August the twelfth is when we go to the city county council to adopt our bond issue.
August twelfth?
Yes.
September?
August the twelfth for the bond.
The bond, okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
And September, we would, we'll do a presentation to the city county council. That'll be my next update. Any questions?
So I, I do wanna note that we are hoping that all members can, um, attend the finance committee meeting in August because it is a public hearing and it is our budget, so.
August the twelfth.
Yes.
At two, is it?
August thirteenth.
August thirteenth.
August thirteenth.
At what time?
Ten.
Ten.
Ten AM.
And that is, I just wanna show our achievement. I can leave this up there if you like.
And you should, you should. Um, thank you, Alita and Mary, um, for all of your work on this. This has been, um, a busy year.
Yes, it has.
And, um, uh, the CFOA is, um, an achievement. It's, as Mr. Nickerson said, is, is distinguishing. And, um, we appreciate your continuing to pursue it. Um, and we appreciate the fact, uh, the reflection that it gives on the work that you do every month. So thank you for your work. Congratulations, um, and excited to hear, um, how we're gonna manage our, our, um, our investments during the meeting next month.
Thank you.
There's nothing else? Congratulations.
Yeah. Yeah, Mary was a big part of this audit, so let's give her a big hand around the board.
Great. We will move on to the diversity policy and human resources committee report. Um, the committee is chaired by Mr. Raymond Beederman.
All right, well, thank you very much. So we have three resolutions for our consideration today. It's a very exciting day. So first resolution is resolution forty-one dash twenty twenty-four, which is the approval, um, of the amended, uh, joint, uh, recommendation of, um, NPL management and, um, the union. Um, this is the extended, this is the new union contract, which will be dated from June first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. Um, in the committee meeting, it passed with a, a do-pass recommendation. And so I present it to the board for our, uh, uh, second and, uh, adoption.
Okay, we heard, um, resolution forty-one, twenty twenty-four regarding the approval to amend the joint recommendations of the IMP CPL management and Ask Me Local thirty-three ninety-five, which received a positive recommendation from the diversity policy and human resources committee. So the chair requests a second. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Do you know how many, what percentage of the eligible employees are members? No idea. Okay.
Okay, can we put that, uh, we please request that information from HR so that we can provide that at our next.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that, can we, is that public information?
It's not?
Yeah.
We'll look at, you can look at whether, whether that's all information we can collect and or share.
All right.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Any other questions?
Okay, next.
You gotta vote on it. So it's been seconded, um, so Angie's gonna call the roll.
Oh, that was discussion, I apologize. Ms., Angie, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman.
Approved.
And Dr. Matata.
Approved.
And Dr. Payne.
Approved.
And Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
And Dr. White.
Approved.
And Ms. Treble.
Approved. The motion carries unanimously.
All right, um, so I gotta get to the next one here, just a second, flipping through my pages. So the next motion is, uh, forty-two, twenty twenty-four, which is an amendment to, um, section two twenty-one, uh, of the, uh, employee policy. This is for approval of, uh, conference attendance and travel procedures. This is where the, um, library will, um, direct pay, um, these, um, conferences. Uh, this also passed out of committee with a do-pass recommendation. And I. This also passed out of committee with a do-pass recommendation, and I request a second and a vote.
So, second.
Let me, let me, so we got Resolution forty two twenty twenty four for the record regarding approval to amend two twenty one professional development, approval of conference attendance and travel procedures. So it has been recommended by the committee and seconded by Dr. Matata. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman.
Approved.
And Dr. Matata.
Approved.
And Dr. Payne.
Approved.
And Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
And Dr. White.
Approved.
And Ms. Treble.
Approved. The motion carries. Back to you.
All right, part, the next motion is forty three dash twenty twenty four. This is an amendment to the Board of Trustees bylaws. This amendment has to do with the direct payment of fees related to conference attendance. And this is something that would require a full board vote. And this did not have a vote at committee because it is an amendment to the bylaws and needs to be presented. This was noticed at the last meeting of the Board of Trustees, and so it satisfied the fourteen day requirement for us to be able to have a vote at this meeting on it.
Thank you. As Mr. Beederman said, there was no recommendation from the committee, but we did notice, we did give notice of it last, at the last meeting. So I, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution forty three twenty twenty four to amend Article nine, Section seven of the Library Board bylaws.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman.
Approved.
And Dr. Matata.
Approved.
And Dr. Payne.
Approved.
And Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
And Dr. White.
Approved.
And Ms. Treble.
Approved. The motion carries unanimously. That concludes your report?
That concludes the voting portion of the report. Next month, we'll have a couple more things. I'm very excited to present them for you.
I look forward to it. Thank you, Mr. Beederman. I will move on to the Facilities Committee Report. The Facilities Committee is chaired by Dr. Eugene White.
Well, my fellow committee members, Dr. Matata and I are very, very pleased to present to you now. Adam is going to walk us through this.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me okay? Great. All right, I have, we have four resolutions for tonight. The first one is Resolution four four dash twenty twenty four, approval to award a services contract for off-duty police officer services. The current contract that we have with off-duty cops was approved by Resolution ninety four dash twenty twenty three in December of last year. It originally ran June, January one to June thirty of this year. The plan was to advertise an R F P for a new contract with a potential new vendor. The R F P was issued. However, of the two proposals we received, the evaluation committee decided to reject both proposals. We will re-advertise later this year, and we would like to extend the existing contract through the end of this year for continuity of police officer services. So this will be a six-month contract. This is approved per Indiana Code five dash twenty two under special purchasing procedures. And as I previously stated, the R F P will be advertised in late fall, or sorry, in fall of twenty twenty four with an expected start date of January one twenty twenty five. That last date is incorrect, it should be twenty twenty five.
Okay, thank you. Resolution forty four twenty twenty four regarding approval to award a services contract for off-duty police officer services received a positive recommendation from the Facilities Committee, so the Chair would request a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman.
Approved.
And Dr. Matata.
Approved.
And Dr. Payne.
Approved.
And Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
And Dr. White.
Approved.
And Ms. Treble.
Approved. The motion carries.
Okay. The next resolution is Resolution forty five dash twenty twenty four, approval to award a construction services contract for the East Thirty Eighth Street Branch R T U one replacement project. So for background, the rooftop unit or R T U is from the original construction in two thousand and three. It has reached the end of its useful life after twenty-one years. One of the compressors failed. Replacement will cost approximately twenty thousand dollars. So we used a value-based judgment to decide to replace the entire unit rather than fix it at the end of its life and continue with the old one. For vendor outreach, we put a public notice out in public papers in June seventh and fourteenth. We directly notified eleven vendors, four of whom, four of which were X B Es. The invitation to quote was posted on our website, and the bid documents were publicly available at Repro Graphics. The invitation to quote process was followed following public works statute thirty six dash one dash twelve. We received two quotes, and Samsung Mechanical was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder per Indiana Code. The awarded cost of approximately eighty-seven thousand dollars is below the budgeted amount of one hundred thousand dollars. Sorry, the project estimate and budgeted amount. And the project will be funded via our twenty nineteen bond, which is Fund four seven nine. The vendor is a city-certified X B E and will self-perform ninety-eight percent of the work. Samsung is a W B E, a women-owned business enterprise. And they will, I forget exactly which company they're using, but I think two percent of it is a non-X B E, I believe, mostly with waste removal of the project. The X B utilization waiver was approved by the manager of purchasing and supplier diversity. As a reminder, as Lolita reported on more in depth, the twenty twenty four, and this is our acronym soup, Q one operational services X B E utilization was forty-nine percent through the first three months of this year just for the Operational Services Department. Overall, the year-to-date N D P L X B utilization is close to thirty-two percent. So this will improve the category of women-owned business enterprise percentage. The other three will not have any contribution. Schedule of substantial completion by April first, and I'm hoping that date doesn't backfire of twenty twenty five prior to the cooling season. No projected closure time for East Thirty Eighth as this is not a standalone unit.
Okay. Resolution forty six, approval, approval to award a design services.
I'm sorry, that was just the start of the next resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry.
I jumped ahead.
Approval to award a construction services contract for the East Thirty Eighth Street Branch R T U one replacement project. Received a positive recommendation from the Facilities Committee, so the Chair would request a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Gilbert, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman.
Approved.
And Dr. Matata.
Approved.
And Dr. Payne.
Approved.
And Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
And Dr. White.
Approved.
And Ms. Treble.
Approved. The motion carries unanimously.
All right, the next resolution, excuse me, is authorization to award a design services purchase order for the Fort Ben Acoustic Treatment Project. So for the background, Fort Ben is one of our two very new branches that opened recently. We have received feedback from patrons and staff regarding noise travel, overall noise levels. And prior, earlier this year, we engaged Haverstick Designs to perform an acoustical study. The recommendations are to have acoustic treatments in the entry hall due to the noise coming from the community room, and also to create a separate space for children and families. This will address monitoring, safety, and monitoring and safety as well as acoustic concerns. So overall impacts, these recommendations require design services to procure a permanent solution. This is beyond the capabilities of current N D P L staff, so we need a design firm. We will use the Fort Ben Design and Construction Team that was used on the overall project. Ratio Design will be the designer. They have submitted a offer, proposal, excuse me, a proposal for forty-eight thousand five hundred and a lump sum, plus four thousand and up to four thousand in possible reimbursable expenses. And Skillman will provide the construction services once they are agreed upon. The vendor is, vendor is not a city-certified X B E and will self-perform eighty percent of the work. They will use Loftus Engineering, which is a woman-owned business enterprise who will perform twenty percent of the work. Overall review of the X B E percentages. That's the last one. So, and I think there was one other thing in a. Yep. For the cost, I didn't say where this would be paid out of, it will be paid out of the same bond fund as the Fort Ben construction. We still have some funds remaining.
So Resolution forty six to approve a, approval to award a design services purchase order for the Fort Ben Branch Acoustic Treatment Project received a positive recommendation from the Facilities Committee, so the Chair would request a second.
Seconds.
Is there any discussion?
Just one point. I find it problematic that we would have to expend another forty-eight thousand dollars for this. I understand that the noise level has to be addressed. How did we anticipate this, knowing that we wanted this particular branch to be one of a model? And we paid quite a bit for the design with ratio. And yet, all of the things that we said wanted to go into it clearly have not been addressed. And that's no fault of yours or the teams, but it clearly is a problem with how we are handling something as sensitive as the noise level from children and the kinds of things that we might anticipate. How will we do better?
How will we do better with new construction design in the future, renovation and construction design?
With all the things that we know that are impacting the ability to control noise levels. We have now this with another forty-eight thousand five hundred plus the possibility of four thousand for reimbursable expenses. We have three new branches. I'm wondering, how did we miss this? How will we anticipate doing better?
Well, acoustic design is part of the overall conversation when designing a new building. When taking a look at the design, among the myriad other things to consider when designing a new building, acoustics was deemed accessible, or acceptable, rather, during the design and simulation process. And unfortunately, after construction, once the patrons and staff were in there, it was one of the things that we found that could be improved upon. So, you know, similar to my explanation of Glendale's chiller not operating and shutting down Glendale for almost a week, we still are going through a shakedown process with Fort Ben. You know, the chiller was a relatively small fix with replacing one part that looks to have solved the problem. This is a little bit more complicated fix, but overall still very much a problem that can be solved and has been solved numerous times across the country. And it's not anything new to design firms to abate suboptimal acoustics.
Dr. Matata and I was talking about this because it, it seems to be a trend that we seem to be picking up on. So the question is, how do we be more preventative in having this to occur in these new designs? And these architects or engineers, you would think that we could get the kind of recommendations that would meet a, a solid most of our concerns. When we look across the different branches and we go through our encyclopedia of facilities, the noise level is one of the most frequent occurrences that you see. But I know you and I talked, and you mentioned about four or five different ways to treat it. But that's after the fact. The fact is, we should have a better system or design that we can depend on. And so it really goes back to the people who designed the building, right? Yeah, and I don't think sometime we hold them as accountable as they should be because that's one of the questions in the design meeting that we should be asking because we're going to have a busy branch. It's not old days, be quiet. You know, you're going to be active and all kind of things. So how can we, and maybe in the structural design, it could be in materials, et cetera, et cetera. But I think we should make sure the next time out that our architects or engineers are kind of solid on how we're going to keep the noise down.
I have the same question. And I'm, and I'm, it actually never occurred to me, but I'm wondering if, as we go forward, is this a, a performance metric that goes into the contract with the, the design firm? Or some, you know, that would allow us to measure satisfaction around noise and noise abatement? I just, I, I agree with the, with the thought, especially since it's a, a brand-new building. Like, is there some kind of warranty for using the building that was just built in, we hope, modern design, so.
Thank you, Hope. And added to that, if we had a simulation process, did that process fail? If we had a simulation process where we're testing and seeing if young people are, the noise level is a significant one, and that goes into the design, then has that failed? And what assurances do we have from the design team?
I'm unsure of the results of any simulation. I may have been hasty to use that word, so I can look into it for you.
If you need testers, I can lend my kids to you for an afternoon.
You and I both.
Adam, I think it's important for the public and everyone to know, we're not blaming you. It's just that as we look back over projects, recent projects, we, we tend to keep getting this put up. And there should be some kind of assurance from the architects or engineers that we have kind of control for that. You know, the biggest variable here is space, because the more land and space you have, structurally, you tend to have a way to break it up a little differently. But we were tight on land in some of those situations. So noise is flowing across the facility, and that may take a different approach. But we're going to have to, I think, and you'd be refereeing this for us, we will have to put the architects or the engineers on notice that we expect this to at least have a low volume of noise going across the facility. And I think that's all we're saying. It's, it's not on you, but we need to do better because this is a good example. We're sitting here tonight, they're not as quiet as they probably, they're probably more noisy on other nights, but I've been in this facility enough time to know. The design is such that noise doesn't flow all the way across the building. And with the different compartments. And with the different compartments, they have areas, different areas. But I'm sure there are some answers. So, we just have to ask those questions as we go forward. That's all.
And question forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars to take care of an issue that...
That they should be paying.
That should have been. And then another four thousand. That's, that's not a small lump sum, even though it's considered a part of what should have been taken care of.
Thank you. Are there any more comments, questions? Okay, hearing none. Please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman.
Approved.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Ms. Trivell.
Approved. The motion carries unanimously. Back to you.
All right. So, we're going a little bit out of order with resolution numbers. This is actually Resolution Thirty-Six dash twenty-twenty-four corrected. So, this is Approval to Award a Construction Services Contract for the Library Services Center Roof Replacement Project. So, I have several slides. They're all the same slides from last month, except for this first one. So, unfortunately, there is a small typo between the Board Action Request and the Resolution that was presented to the Board last month. The Board Action Request for this resolution noted a price of six-hundred-nine-thousand-one-hundred-seventy dollars. That is the correct price. The Resolution noted a price of six-hundred-seven-thousand-one-hundred-seventy dollars, which was the incorrect price. So, there's a two-thousand-dollar difference on a six-hundred-thousand-dollar job. We are requesting to update Resolution Thirty-Six dash twenty-twenty-four, the actual resolution, to show the accurate price of six-hundred-nine-thousand-one-hundred-seventy dollars.
So, Resolution Thirty-Six twenty-twenty-four corrected. It doesn't get another resolution number? Okay, so it was approved regarding approval to correct a previously approved construction services contract for the L S C Roof Replacement Project. Received a recommendation from the Facilities Committee, so the Chair would request a second.
So, move.
Is there any discussion?
A second.
Hearing none. We'll now have a roll call, please.
Mr. Beederman.
Approved.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Ms. Trivell.
Approved. The motion carries unanimously.
I'm just going to forward through these slides so they're ready for the next. Was that the last one? Oh, I wonder if I hit the power button instead. Yep, there we go. All right. I should just put this thing down.
Does that conclude your report, Mr. Parsons?
Those were the four resolutions that were presented to the committee.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Mr. Parsons? Adam, thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to say we are very happy, Dr. Matata and I, to have Dr. Riola on the Facilities Committee. And we're looking forward to great things.
Awesome.
Big thanks.
All right. Our next agenda item is a Library Foundation update. It will be presented live in person tonight by Ms. Roberta Jaggers, who's President of the Library Foundation. Welcome, Roberta.
Thank you, everybody. Good evening. And I thank you, Ray, for the opportunity to give this report. I do like to visit with you all at least a couple of times a year at this meeting. And you have two things from us this evening. You have a written report, which goes over kind of the basic stuff. So, there's a listing of some donors who've contributed in the past month. If you know them and can help us thank them and some programs that we're supporting. We also talk a bit about our strategic plan, but I will update, I'll share a little bit more about that in my presentation. So, if you want to, I get to go to the next slide. Okay. So, the things that I wanted to cover here are just about the Library Foundation. And I know many of you are already very familiar with us. But this is for the sake of new board members and friends joining us from home, just to get the word out about what we do. We want to share with you what we've been doing in terms of diversity, equity, inclusion. We'll give you a little update about the strategic plan. And then we'll give you a little update about the Lilian Childers Hall Scholarship, which is now in the capable hands of the library's Talent and Development Department and the Selection Committee to get those awards out there. So, we'll go on. The first thing is about the foundation. And we're the not-for-profit philanthropic partner of the library system. We were founded in nineteen-sixty-nine. And our mission is to activate the community's generosity to elevate the library's impact. So, we do that by raising funding for targeted library initiatives, dozens of them per year. And we invest roughly two-point-five million dollars annually, as I said, in targeted initiatives that support learning, well-being, and belonging. So, we really want to align our support with the library's priorities. And we have a staff of eight. And we have seventeen board members. And significantly, our board members do include Gregory Hill and Ray Beederman. It is written into our bylaws to always have a library trustee and the library CEO as ex officio voting board members. So, wanted to share that little bit of background. Our D E I work. So, we've been doing quite a bit. And this is where I need to pay attention to my papers. Okay. So, the first thing I want to share with you is that we've been working very hard the past three years to improve representation of diverse groups on our Board of Directors. And so, the chart is a little bit challenging to see. But basically, the first line is, and I can email this to you after our meeting. But the first, the top part is the diversity of the county. The second line is the us in twenty-twenty-four. And then the third line is us in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty. I'm sorry, I got that mixed up. Anyway, what it shows is that we have significantly increased the percentage of our board members who are African-American. And that's been probably the biggest demographic shift we've seen on our board. Some other factors of diversity that have been relatively stable are age, gender, identity, sexual orientation, disability status, and veteran status. And I would say within those, comparing to county diversity statistics, gender identity and sexual orientation are our areas for biggest improvement and representation. And of course, to continuing to recruit more African-Americans to our board. We also wanted just to share with you that our board leadership is also becoming more diverse. And so, we have an executive committee, our board officers. And so, we have five of those people. And you can see that our board, our board leadership team is forty percent African-American and sixty percent white. Twenty percent of our board on the leadership team identify as having a disability. And I, as the Foundation President, also identify as having a disability. And you can see our ages are pretty well spread out. And we do have one out of five or twenty percent of our board members also are Latina. So, we do have a good bit of diversity there with our board leadership. Okay. The next thing I wanted to share with you is about a year ago, we engaged a group called Onyx Rising to review our operations through a D E I lens. So, our own way of handling the process, or response to us doing the process that you went through with Ice Miller. And again, wanting just to give us recommendations, we started the process knowing that there's always opportunities to be better in this area. And so, we were just looking for some things. And Onyx Rising gave us a few recommendations staged over several years. But basically, to develop a shared language and framework for our D E I program at the Library Foundation, and then to integrate that framework into all aspects of our operations, and expand our circle by cultivating meaningful relationships with people from underrepresented groups. And they had some suggested strategies for doing that. And so, as far as implementation goes, what we've done already is I've attended the standard, the International Standard Organization, three oh four one five, a training on that. And that's a standard that relates to diversity, equity, inclusion. Kim Ubers and I took that training together. We also secured grant funding to pay for Kim's participation in that. We developed a strategic framework. And this was several board meetings, as Gregory and Ray will tell you, where we had really in-depth conversations with our board and staff altogether about our definitions for what diversity, equity, inclusion mean to us in the foundation. What are our vision for success? How will this help us be stronger? And then what are some areas or pillars that we want to focus on? And so, we're focusing on talent, culture, and impact as our first set of pillars. So, we did that. And one area where we've gotten some good feedback is on the fact that we do really have a lot of integrated board and staff conversations. So, the board, our staff has a lot of access to our board. And that's a really good thing for D E I in our organization. We've also formed a staff committee to lead our D E I efforts. So, it's not just me, but others championing it and leading it. We've updated job descriptions to include an area where each person is responsible for rotating through that D E I committee and also inclusive leadership expectations for people who are managers. And then we made some recommended updates to the employee handbook as well. So, the next things we're going to be working on are finalizing the charter for our staff committee. We're going to be doing some training on inclusive leadership, updates to some governing documents, and integrating all of this work into our strategic plan. We are going through a strategic planning process that's just following yours by a couple of months. So, those are some things that we're doing on D E I. And the next thing I think I have is a little bit about our strategic plan. And what I'll just share with you is that we do have a board committee. We're relying heavily on the library's work for community assessment. And we, you know, we're trusting the library to determine how to serve the public and what those needs are. And then our job is to come along and strategize on how we can raise the funding that's needed to help realize the library's vision. So, we are finalizing our vision, mission, values, and goal statement on July twenty-fourth with a board committee of which Gregory and Ray are both part and of which McKenzie is a wonderful participant as well. And then it will be over to the staff to work on more of the tactical things. And then our committee will review the plan in October, and we should have it approved in November. So, probably just a, you know, shortly after yours is approved as well. Working together in partnership with the library, Ray and Gregory McKenzie's participation is very important because our goal is to have a plan that aligns with the library's plan. We want to know how we can support the library in our plan. And then what does it mean for us to have our own personality and experience within that plan? So, we're very excited about this and have enjoyed working on that as well. And then the last thing that I have for you all, and I know that I wanted to share this with you, is also with my donor stewardship hat on, because most of you have given to this. But we do have a scholarship for Lilian Childers Hall. And this was a scholarship that, just to catch people who aren't familiar with this, we established this scholarship last year. And it provides scholarships for library employees who are part of underrepresented groups to pursue their Masters in Library Science or Masters in Library Information Science. And the goal is just to support a more diverse librarian pool here at the library system. This is something that we've raised about fifty-two thousand dollars for that. So, that is enough money to endow a fifteen-hundred-dollar-a-year scholarship, which is enough for like one class at the Department of Library and Information Science at I U P U I. So, a little bit about the process that we went through. I think that when developing the proposal and the concept for it, there was a lot of consultation with Kala, who really was the one who brought up, revived the idea of doing something philanthropic to honor Lilian Childers Hall. We talked about what that could look like with the staff. Tisha brought up the scholarship idea, which had been discussed previously. And then there were a lot of conversations with experts in Lilian Childers Hall, like Michelle Fenton and Stephen Lane and Nichelle Hayes to understand her legacy. We convened an advisory committee who basically fleshed out what should be in the application in responsiveness to her legacy and what was significant about her legacy. And now, it's over to a selection committee, which is under, being led by Talent and Development. And there are several staff members on there who are now actually going to be accepting applications and vetting them and selecting a winner. And the applications, I'm told, will be off, opening this week. So, we do hope that by the fall, there will be some kind of an announcement to share with you all about our first winner of the scholarship. But again, we just really appreciate everybody who's contributed knowledge, ideas, and funding to this project because it was a lot of different types of contributions that came together to make this project, which I hope is going to be very, very successful and make a big difference in the careers of a lot of our librarians. So, I'm excited about that, too. And that concludes my presentation. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to advance my slide. But there's Lilian Childers Hall. And that's a recap of what I just, what's just said. Okay. Okay. So, again, I just, the last thing I have for you is just to say thank you for your leadership and support. You know, my team and I, we talked to a lot of people who love the library. And in general, we're getting some very, very positive feedback about the direction the library's going in. So, just keep up what you guys are doing. And it's just a very, very exciting time. I really feel like our most exciting days are ahead of us and just love working with Gregory and the leadership team and the rest of the staff at the library and all of you as well. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Roberta. I have a question.
Oh, yes.
I just wanted to offer you high commendations.
Oh, thanks.
On everything you're doing. And when you said Onyx Rising is doing your audit, that means you are definitely serious about what you are doing. Because they do not play. So, high commendations on everything. Really proud of you.
Thank you. Well, you've given me some great pointers over the years, as have many of you on the board. And then you'll be happy to know that, first of all, Onyx Rising was a Hope recommendation. So, that was really nice. And the other piece is that we completed the audit a year ago. But I'm still, we're still engaging the Onyx Rising team as a coach for me. So, I meet with her quarterly. And if I have a challenge, I talk through it with her. And then she's also giving us some pointers on inclusive leadership. And we're doing some more business with them as far as trainings on that. So, I highly recommend, I actually just called, spoke to somebody in North Dakota on Thursday, I think it was, who wanted to work with them and gave them a very positive recommendation. So, thank you. Okay. Anything else?
Was there another question?
Hi, everybody, stand there.
Just one other question.
Okay, oh, yeah.
I'm so glad that we were able to grow this. And from the inception of the idea that we were able to grow it, so thank you. We have one scholarship that's going to be coming out fall, right? What will it take for us to continue to grow that so that we can increase the number of individuals who get that scholarship? What would that take?
Well, I think it would just, you know, probably take another round of what we did earlier this year. So, we can talk a little bit more about that offline. I think that there are ongoing opportunities. One of the things in my master plan is we've had a lot of, lot of people contribute to this. And once that new represent, person is announced, that becomes a stewardship opportunity for all those donors who gave and say, hey, look at this awesome person that got this scholarship. Thank you so very much. And would you like to consider giving again? And so, we can decide that. And right now, what we're doing is we are wait, we're looking at many other things to help the library advance its strategic plan. But I'm definitely open to, you know, if there's a donor that this is their thing, or maybe they didn't have a chance to give the first time, we're definitely open to repeat gifts or approaching new folks for it as well. So, I think that this will be, this will stay on the menu because I think it's an enduring opportunity to give.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah.
So, Roberta, my question was, when we met, when I first joined the board, you talked about one of the challenges sometimes in D E I is that particular professions do not have a large pool of diverse candidates. And you see that CPAs, you see that with, I think, architects. But I also think that fundraising and development is also one of those areas.
It is.
So, what kinds of things are you doing to kind of deal with that challenge?
Well, I think that we have, with some existing staff now, we've been very, we've nominated her. And she received a fellowship through the Association for Fundraising Professionals to get some mentoring in, you know, in fundraising. And so, I think that that person, through her time at the foundation, has really solidified her path and development. So, whether she stays with us long-term or whether she moves on, you know, I like to think that we contributed to that growth that way. So, that's one thing that we're doing. In our report with Onyx Rising, one of their recommendations was to, in a couple of years down the road, to perhaps start a fellowship or an internship for people who are diverse in the, underrepresented in the fundraising profession to come and work at the foundation and see if we can, you know, build a talent pipeline that way. Because it's a library foundation issue, but it's also a profession issue. So, those are two examples of things that we do to try to support and encourage, you know, fundraisers who are not white women, basically, to step forward.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Beederman?
Just wanted to say thank you very much for the unbelievable hard work you put in every day. It's very apparent from every meeting and every email and every communication that you think about things. you think about things from multiple ways, through multiple lenses, and really strive to include everyone you can in everything. And it's very commendable, and all the work you're doing in DEI is really great as well. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm blessed to have a good team, and I just get, I feel like, I don't know, I feel like this is a job, I mean, just as Roberta's speaking personally, I feel like the people that I work with here at the library, including you and including library colleagues, and of course, the amazing foundation board and staff members, everybody just brings out the best in me, I think, so that helps me to do better. And then I just try really hard to create an environment that brings out the best in everybody. So you know what, I would say thank you for that, but that's really just a reflection of the overall team and that I'm really proud and happy to be part of. So thank you. Anything else? Okay. Appreciate all your questions.
Thank you so much.
Reach out anytime you have any other questions.
Okay, we'll look forward to seeing you another time this year, right? You said you come a couple times. Thank you, Roberta. Okay, we'll move on to the report of the CEO. Mr. Hill?
First, I have the confirmatory resolution 47-2024 related to travel, finance, and personal matters that occurs between each board meeting. The resolution's in its typical format. I would ask that you approve of this resolution.
Okay. The confirming resolution regarding finances, personnel, and travel, 48-2024, has been presented. Is there a motion to approve it?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I would just correct, it should be 47.
Okay. That's resolution 47. We'll now-
Still moved.
It's still moved, and we still got a second. We'll now have a roll call for resolution 47.
Mr. Beederman?
Approved.
Dr. Matara?
Approved.
Dr. Payne?
Approved.
Dr. Riolo?
Approved.
Dr. White?
Approved.
And Ms. Tribble?
Approved. The motion carries unanimously. Back to you, Mr. Hill.
All right, thank you. My presentation for this month will include highlights for activities for the month of June, the previous 30 days. The report will include selected branch and programming development area programs, also the SRP midpoint, Star Award winners, fax stats, board training, CIP notables, and then an update on quarter three goals. The first one here is the branch program highlights. Wayne, Central, and West Perry. Wayne had the Giants Cafe, which is a lunch bus, for approximately four weeks from June 10th to July 12th. While the children are, have a chance to enjoy lunch, a member of the community or someone from the staff or a board member reads to the children. And this photo right here is Naomi Kanja, the West Region Area Resource Manager. Central had the Equity Series. They welcomed authors of the book Who Would Believe a Prisoner: Indiana Women's Carceral Institution, 1848 to 1920. It talked about the resurrected, the truths about women's prison. Also, in celebration of Pride Month, they did a Wikipedia Edathon guided by Wikimedia's and the Chris Gonzalez collection and other resources. Participants edited the Wikipedia pages related to LGBTQ+ topics. West Perry, they had the Chair aerobics. It's been a very successful program. They averaged about 15 patrons per session. Also, West Perry was awarded the International Design Association for Public Libraries under 30,000 square feet. The PDA Featured Summer Reading Program midpoint, juvenile SRP reading program. So far, we had, as of July the 18th, 14,722 kids and teens. For the daycare and summer camps, we had 12,497 participants. In the adult summer reading program, 5,482 adults. Across all groups, program groups, our patrons have read over 16 million minutes, and we are approaching our community reading goal of 18 million minutes. All right. The next one is the juvenile program highlights. We had 510 programs. We served over 14,700 patrons. One of the programs was the Pause for Calls. As you know, this year's summer reading program is about pets, leading many of our programs for kids to focus on brands or pets. Branches have participated in Pause for Calls Give Back Program through the Indy Humane Society. In June, library staff held 11 sessions, and patrons created tie blankets and tug toys, which is the picture that you see there for the Indy Humane Society. The Boys and Girls Club, we hosted book donation drive. In June, we collected over 1,000 books. Those books will go directly to Building Home Libraries for Community Boys and Girls, and we are still, at this time, collecting gently-used books through the end of the All right. Adult program highlights. We had 107 programs. 1,107 patrons participated. Coffee Brewing Program 101. Scott Curry from the Popular Indianapolis Coffee Guide, he was our presenter for the Coffee Brewing 101. The program was presented at four different branch locations, and we had 89 patrons who attended that program. Patrons learned new facts about coffee, including standard barista techniques and the science of coffee bean roasting. Our book discussion, we partnered with the Indiana Humanities in 2024 One State, One Story Campaign. We hosted three discussions with, from the featured book, All That She Carried: The Journey of Ashley Sack, A Black Family's Keepsake by Taya Miles. The book explores the importance of physical family belongings in preserving family history. We had 34 patrons who participated in that event. And I'd like to go through our Star Award winners. Also, this month, we hosted our second quarter reception for all of our Star Award winners for the second quarter. We had a really good turnout. We celebrated recipients with certificates, cake refreshments, and they had a chance to talk with ELT members and myself. Patron services was Sylvia Robertson from Fort Ben. Peer support was Leah Rosewood from College. Community involvement was Montoya Barker from the Central Library. Team excellence, the Wayne staff. Page excellence, Sarah Vitello. Volunteering partnerships, Beth Patton from Hallville. And summer reading excellence was Maureen Keisterston Yates from Outreach Services and Charlie Hudson from Outreach Services. The committee's choice was the LGBTQ Committee. And then other duties assigned was Jim Myers, who does our events for us. So congratulations to all June Star Award winners.
Can we give a round of applause for them, please?
Thank you. Next here, real quickly, we're going to have a second quarter statistical update by our Strategic Planning and Assessment Officer, but I just wanted to cover facts here real quickly. Between April and June, the library served 4,869 patrons in 2023, and in 2024, we served 4,621 patrons. That was a small decrease of about 5% of the patrons that we served from the previous year. During this period, we sent over 46,026 pages were sent out. In 2024, we sent out 24,182 pages. In 2023, that was 21,844 pages sent, which was an 11% increase in 2024, although we had fewer patrons in '24. I want to talk about board training and some of the leadership training that we've had for the board. We've had two board retreats. We had one in January, which focused on, in the public trust manual. We were able to go through the manual, among other topics. And then our May retreat, we focused on psychological safety training. So the board was able to get the psychological safety training that the ELT has received and the systems managers as well. We are planning on having another board retreat in October, November, so we'll be getting that together to get the word out for that. We also, in one of our board retreats, we talked about some training that we wanted to do for, not just the board, but myself also. And one of the things we talked about was making sure that we attended at least one conference a year per board member. Some of those conferences include ILF, the regional conferences, the youth services conferences, and then the annual conference, which is coming up in November. Also, there are what's called short-take videos. Those videos are less than 30 minutes, and the topic explores the basics, such as what it means to be a trustee and fiduciary responsibilities of board members. Each month, they have a different topic, and again, those are less than 30 minutes that we all partake in watching those videos. The next one is the on-demand videos. United for Libraries offers many learning opportunities that cater to our board's professional development needs as well. Those are once a quarter or once a month, but we are responsible for viewing one of those a quarter. They are every Tuesday at 2:00 p.m., but they're also on-demand. So if we don't have a chance to watch them when they are presented live, we can watch them on-demand as well. And then I want to talk about the climate improvement progress here really quickly. In June, the ELT was presenting the results by the ICE Miller Racial Equity Team. And then on July the 17th, this was presented to the staff as well. And just a couple notable results here. Improved DEI strategy rating. Participants' rating of the library's strategy for improving equity, diversity, inclusion, and accessability increased by 31% from 2021 to 2024, reflecting significant improvement. The second one, enhanced reporting confidence, belief that complaints will be investigated. 17% felt satisfaction, action will be taken, and 16% were knowledgeable of the reporting procedures, and then 15% saw notable improvements. The next one is fairness in promotion decisions. The perception of fairness in promotion decisions increased by 12%, indicating progress in this area. Trust in leadership. Trust in the executive leadership team improved by 11%, showing a positive trend in confidence in the organization's leadership. And then lastly, balanced focus on DEI. Most of the participants, 71%, believe the library is focusing the right amount on DEI. 18% felt that we were doing too much, and then 12% were wanting more. Some goals for quarter three. We're going to go through all the library's policies. We're going to start those in quarter three. We're going to be going through the library's policies. And then the Chief Talent and Development Officer, Tisha Galarce, and the Chief Communications and Marketing Officer, Mary Barr, will be managing that project. The Business Continuity Plan, we've been working on that for several months now, but we're making progress. We have completed the Essential Functions portion of the plan, and we continually meet to get the plan completed. And I think our goal was to have that completed by August or either December. I apologize, I forget which state that was. The last one is SharePoint. The project is moving along. Talent and Development, CMSA, IT, program development area, and the library foundation are hope will be up and running on SharePoint by the end of the third quarter. And then the rest of the departments will be up by the end of the year. And that is the end of my portion of the presentation. Any questions for me?
Any questions?
Just a short one. Thank you so much, Greg, for your leadership. And we've received notices, I think the board received a notice of complimenting you on your leadership. Well, you mentioned about books to be donated, and they would be donated to homes and libraries, boys and girls clubs. How does that process work?
I would have to check, I could check with the PDA department on that. I'm not absolutely sure how that works, and I don't want to give you the wrong information, but I can find out how that actually works.
That'd be great. I just want to make sure that we have equity of opportunity, so that if they're given to homes or if they're given to different places, who gets to benefit from them?
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Greg, I'm wondering, you highlighted the fax services. What's the significance of that? Because I, when I think about fax machines, I think about them being old and not necessarily the way that we would relay information anymore. And so I just, generally for myself, but also other people may be wondering, why, why, why do we continue that, or what kinds of things, what does that help?
That's a great question. I think most government services, still, we have to fax, patrons have to fax, we can't send emails. So that's a lot of our faxes going out, or the patrons are, you know, sending information to government services. And it's pretty important. I know recently, we lowered the fees for faxing, so we do get a lot of use of our faxes, and mostly for government services.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for our CEO?
All right. If not, I'd like to ask Marianne McKenzie, Ms. Marianne McKenzie, our Strategic Planning and Assessment Officer, to come forward. She will give a statistical update for the second quarter.
Isn't this where we say you have to come back next month? No, we actually have time. We have plenty of time to get this important, useful information. So welcome, Ms. McKenzie.
Well, thank you for having me. I'm always flexible, as they say, statistics don't change, so. You'll have in your packet a full set of about 10 slides. We've tried to keep this consistent as we've worked on sort of dialing in what should be included in these statistical reports from quarter to quarter. But I'm just going to highlight a couple of the ones that I think you might notice some key changes in. So first of all, of course, cardholder statistics are going to be our primary, where do I point this? There we go. Our primary area of interest here. So cardholder statistics are one of those key performance indicators for the library. And what you'll see is that for 2024, and I will note, this is going to be for May 2024, most of what I show you is ending in June. I just happened to have the May data on hand when I was creating these slides. We're showing overall growth in the total number of cardholders, but that key percentage of active cardholders is still kind of remaining consistent in that 55, 60% area. So happy to see new members joining us, happy to see us continue to increase the total number of cardholders. But we still, as always, are finding new ways or trying to transition that into long-term, making sure they stay engaged with the library for an entire year, so they don't fall into that inactive cardholder category. One great piece of news, since we're in the Glendale Branch, is that they are one of the top branches this quarter for card registrations. Fort Ben is another top performer, so we can see that those investments in those communities are continuing to result in driving that engagement with the library. So that's fantastic to see. And then, of course, per usual, online registration continues to be one of the key ways that people like to enroll to get a library card. And that kind of equates with the continued increase in circulation of digital materials and access to our databases. So we are just increasingly becoming a more digital library. But let's talk a little bit about non-digital stuff, physical circulation. So last quarter, when I was here, I mentioned that we were seeing about a 2% decrease, and at that time, we had three branches closed. We're now down to just two very heavy-use, well-loved branches under renovation and construction right now. So as a result, we are continuing to see a slight decrease in physical circulation. I looked into what the root cause was, and genuinely, it is Piken Nora's closure. We are seeing that the branches surrounding them are having a chance to embrace those patrons and offer them a temporary home branch. So we're seeing that those surrounding branches have some increased circulation, some increased door count, increased engagements. But in total, we're seeing this 1% decrease. I'll keep monitoring it into the next quarter, but I think we're probably going to see this through the end of the year. But I would hope that next year, when we're all open again, that we'll see this rebound and hopefully convert into growth. I also have a new statistic, something that we haven't shown you in the past. People count, or what you might see in your branch manager reports referred to as door count. So this is just the number of people who enter your branch. So we haven't been showing you this statistic because we knew that we had an old way of counting that basically used a beam. So when you walked through the beam, you'd get a click, and it'd count a person. We transitioned over to a new video-monitored door counter. So now, when someone walks into the branch, we can see the top of their head, and it will count their head as they enter. It's more accurate, so we can now have a count not only of the total number of clicks beam breaks over the quarter. beam breaks over the course of the day, but we can actually count direction. So we have an idea over an hour how many people are actually in the branch over the course of a day. So that means that we can hopefully, long-term, gather some data and make some predictions on when are branches most busy and most popular, and make some data-informed decisions about staffing and when to offer programs and similar items. This is something that you might remember when I talked about our new PC system the other month or other quarter. We talked about how it also allowed us to see those peaks. So now we have PC usage peaks, we have door count peaks. We're starting to get to a set of data that we can actually use to inform some interesting decisions about staffing in the library. Now, the downside of this new, more accurate count is that it turns out our old counter was overcounting, which we kind of knew. So what you're going to see is that for 2023, we have a number that's up here. And then for 2024, we have a number that's about 10% lower. And this is just due to that more accurate count. So I compared the statistics for all the other in-branch metrics that we have, whether that was physical circulation, people being helped at a branch in terms of having like a reference question answered. Nothing else showed a similar pattern of decrease. The only decreases we really saw were stuff that was tied to those Nora and Pike closures. So what will happen is that over the next couple of years, this year hopefully will be our baseline. And we'll continue to reference that 2023 data, some of that older data, because we reported it to the state library. So since it's out there in the world, it's kind of that baseline we have to reference. But I'll just continue to kind of note, we're seeing a slight decrease. It's not an actual decrease in engagement with the library, it's just a more accurate count. So exciting, but optically a little bit reduced. The last thing that I wanted to talk with you about is program attendance, because that continues to be a real point of pride for us this year. We're continuing to see both an increase in the number of programs we offered and also an increase in attendance from the previous year. So we're really starting to see some returns and investment from Mary and her team about getting a broader understanding about what the library offers. And we're just really seeing, you know, the community continue to recognize and value the types of programs that we offer. In your packet, you'll find that there's some additional data about what strategic priorities we offered, programs under, and some additional details. But the real takeaway here is that programs continue to be a great source of enjoyment for our patrons and a great way for our staff to continue to draw people in and convert them into those active cardholders. Because of course, every program has an opportunity to borrow a book or learn about a digital offering that we have through our catalog. Any questions about anything I just presented or anything in the packet?
I have a question about the counters.
Yeah.
Is there any way to differentiate adults from pediatrics from children coming in? Or there's just per count, so?
I'd have to ask the vendor. It does, it is able to differentiate, I assume, size of head. Because I do recall, when we were originally choosing this particular counter, that that was potentially one of the options. But I don't know why we didn't adopt that.
And what size of head would it pick up? I mean, could we be missing someone who comes in with baby, children, children, babies?
So we did have them test. So if you came in with like a stroller, if your stroller didn't have a shade up and your baby's head was in the stroller, it would count a single person in the stroller. If two people walk in side by side, holding hands, it's accurate enough to be able to detect two heads. What happens is the old beam was very sensitive because we wanted to be highly accurate, but it meant that a sunbeam might trigger it. So we are, you know, confident that we're continuing to count more accurately and that this is, on the whole, a great improvement. But it does reveal that our old data is perhaps a bit less reliable than we had hoped.
It was state-of-the-art at the time.
Yes.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Just one quick one. The, one of the largest events that we've ever had at the library was the opening of the CBLC. How do we determine the comparative use of different spaces within the library? For example, if we have like the space for the young children that we're getting, that we're renovating and that type of thing, how do we determine that?
So at Central, when we upgraded the door count, we did include, there's a counter on the auditorium, there's a counter for the CBLC. So within Central, we are able to measure that engagement, because they do tend to do those large-scale programs. But otherwise, internally, we're not currently tracking. We're really only tracking at the door. And then at programs, having staff, you know, old-fashioned-wise, count people as they enter the door, or count heads at peak during a program.
I think about that because I know that we're going through, I had the great fortune to bring some little ones to the CBLC. And it was great. The books are jam-packed in there. And so Greg was telling me, we're getting ready, no, I think it was Greg that told me, we're getting ready to go through and refine and clear out. And I thought, oh, wow, what a great opportunity for more children to come and get a, get a grip on those books.
Yes.
And so just want to see how we can track that, especially since we're getting ready to comb through all of that.
Sure. And the CBLC data, if you want moving forward, I could potentially highlight usage of that space a little bit separate from the usage of when we report for Central, because we definitely have that data being tracked.
Thank you for all of this. And yes, you said, you know, if we use the data to drive what we're doing, we also see a return on investment. And this is so important. Thank you.
Welcome.
All right. That concludes the CEO report.
Thank you. And thank you again, Ms. McKenzie. Thank you again, Mr. Hill. We'll move on to discussion and agenda building. Future agenda items, this is a time when we, we make available for our board members to suggest items to be included in future library board meeting agendas. Are there any suggestions from board members?
It might be a good idea to hear how the CBLC is doing. And it, like I said, it was one of the largest ones and getting ready to comb through its collection. Am I right? It was you who told me that it was, yeah, we're getting ready to go through the collection. It might be great to have an update about it and to see what we might do to be supportive.
Yes. Dr. Matata, we do have that planned for a little, because we have a new director, and we wanted to give her a minute to get set and see what's going on. And I, Greg and I talked about that. So she is, she is on the schedule. It may not be next month. I don't remember, but, but it will be, we will get a report. Yes. Thank you. Are there any other suggestions? Okay, we'll move on. The notice of our next regular meeting will be Monday, August 26th, 2024, at the Fort Ben Library, Fort Ben Branch Library at 9330 East 56th Street at 6:30 p.m. And if there's no further business, seeing no further business come before the board, this meeting is adjourned.